Nine o'clock. Sheriff's gonna leave us on the fledge.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, one government, indivisible, with every and justice for all.
Walker.
Craig Scott.
You're.
Mark Serbrook.
Present.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbecker.
Present.
Jenny David.
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda? The microphone, man?
Now, now they are.
Corrections or additions to the agenda, guys?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agendas.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three A. We have the approval of the July 22nd, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
I've had the opportunity to review the minutes. Would make a motion be approved?
I'll second.
We have a motion with support to approve the July 22nd, 2021 regular meeting minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three B, July 22nd, 2021 closed session meeting minutes, which I believe those all just got passed out to us.
Make a motion. We approve the closed minutes.
I second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Newbecker to support the July 22nd, 2021 closed session meeting minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three C, August 5th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. There is something on there I wanted to add. On section B, it says Chairperson David would like one candidate to attend Kirtland Academy as a trial. I would like added in there secondary to cost savings for in district tuition.
Say that again. Secondary.
To cost savings for in district tuition and mileage. Are there any other additions or corrections?
Move to accept with correction or addition.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the August 5th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes with the additions or corrections that were that were discussed. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three D, August 5th, 2021 closed session meeting minutes.
I read those minutes and motion to accept the minutes.
I'll support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Vaughn with support from Commissioner Newbecker to support the August 5th, 2021 closed session meeting minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item four, public comment. Public comment on the agenda item matters. This is the first of two opportunities for public comment. On December 10th, 2020, the Board of Commissioners, Resolution 20 to 77 to adopt rules of procedure that include a structure for public comment. This public comment period is limited to topics that appear on the meeting agenda. A second public comment period appears later in the agenda at which time statements will be accepted on any manner or issue that is relevant and germane to county government. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject manners. Tell her fair to follow the direction of the chairperson or result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound the gavel when the audience applauds or derides a speaker. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we thank you in your advance. We thank you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? On to item five, correspondence. We have two correspondence, one from the city of West Branch related to public hearing notice. Item five B, the Mus- Mesaki County related to the American Rescue Plan Act and Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Are we going to be receiving many of these related to the American Rescue Plan Act from various counties?
Maybe. This one's sort of odd in that they're distributing to all the counties their strategy and what they're going to do, which is really kind of.
That's what I thought.
But they asked that you receive it and you have. I'd really be surprised if you see too many more of those because it's more of a local matter than it is statewide.
Okay, so those have been received and filed.
Well.
Item.
Let me ask Tim about this city of West Branch hearing notice. I mean, this property, I think, backs up to to the annex building, right, in that area. Is that a...
Is there an issue?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's there's an issue that we are we should look at or...
I took a glance at the aerial of the properties. They're asking for four-foot variance in the setback for a project that they want to do. And candidly, I don't believe that's going to encroach or interfere in anything that the county's doing. But this is a necessary process, as you're probably aware, that anytime you have a variance, they have to go through the public hearing. They have to notify anybody within 300 feet.
Right.
So that's that's why we received the notice. But I don't believe there's going to be any impact on anything we're doing.
All right. Just because it does border our our property, I thought we should take that look. And it was eight foot setback.
Right.
Rather than within a 15 foot. That will come in from the planning commission, the county planning commission, because the city does their own zoning. Okay. Very good then. Thank you.
Item six, action on consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of those new business agenda items that the Board of Commissioners determines to be routine. Before putting the question to the commissioners, the chairperson shall permit commissioners remove from the consent calendar those items on which they have questions or wish to debate. A vote is not required to remove a manner from the consent calendar. The chairperson will ask for a roll call vote on the consent calendar. I would like to remove from that consent calendar items A, B, F, G, and H.
A, E.
C, D, and E. Anything else from the other commissioners? So that would include item C, D, and E, which is the... Pardon me?
Would you like to look at that?
Item C is a resolution to certify Ogumah County Representatives to the 2020 Retirement Conference. Item D is a resolution to appoint members to the 211 Northeast Michigan Board of Directors. And item E is a resolution to adopt a financial depository policy. Those three were discussed in our Committee of the Whole.
C, D, and E.
Correct.
You want to consent to that?
Correct.
A move. Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll support that.
We have a motion with support for the consent calendar to combine Resolution C to certify Ogumah County Representatives to the MERS 2021 Retirement Conference. D, resolution to appoint members to the 211 Northeast Michigan Board of Directors. And item E, resolution to adapt their financial depository policy. Is there any discussion on that? Any discussion? Walker.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
So we are going to start with item seven, a new business resolution to authorize attendance at Delta College Police Academy. We have a motion for this.
I'd like to discuss.
We have.
I'd make a motion to the resolution be adopted.
I second that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook for support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the resolution to authorize attendance at the Delta College Police Academy discussion.
All right. Sheriff, I got questions for you. Come on up, please. There's no doubt that this is.
You have the floor, Commissioner.
Yeah, I know. And I know. I'm taking my time here.
Okay.
Change. Um. You know, back there just before you took office, after the election and took office, we probably talked more than we have since. I told you the last administration, it was the last minute deals I didn't like because they take this right down to the last minute on every freaking deal. I'm sorry, I use that slang. And then there was always a deal. We had, we would do this, if you would do that. And those were the two things that really bothered me. But and we're here at the last hour right now. And it's my perception that I'm this hinged boat in this thing. And I think you feel the same way. And I got a, I got a problem with expanded hours. I've been saying this at meetings constantly. Is there a way that we can expand the hours of coverage now? We passed this thing for 24-hour service. I've thrown ideas out there for just expanded hours temporarily until we can go to full 24-hour shifts. Is it just a few days a week after, you know, later hours? It's a 24 hours. I pitched an idea to the undersheriff the other day about a five-day, eight-hour shift after after our hours that we're doing now. You said last meeting, we all agreed that the taxpayers voted for this. Matter of fact, they they paid for this. They've already paid the bill. We we billed them in December and they paid the bill. And the soonest that we're hearing from you is 2022. And they'll be paying another bill by then. And next month, we got to make a decision as a board whether or not we we're going to charge the whole bill or we're not. This is, it doesn't go, the money doesn't go away. It builds into a fund balance, but that's not the agreement that we had with the taxpayer. So I guess I'm I'm asking, is there any way we can get something going before the first of the year? And I and I'm really, within this month, until the first of the year, or at at the most, at the end of, at the first of September. I mean, maybe it's crunch time. We got to do something. They've paid the bill. They voted for it. They've asked for it. And they've paid the bill. And we've been patiently waiting for you to come up with something. We only have suggestions. We're not trying to, we're not, but it's crunch time. We got to start. We got to start showing something. This is, this is the integrity of the county. Come on. I mean, we've asked, we've asked them for for their vote. They gave it to us. And then we sent them the bill, the bill, and they paid it. And I think this is, in order to go to the future, the next step with more officers and everything else, are we really going to do this or not? You know? I mean, I don't want to get to January and for some reason, you got some deputies down, maybe maybe for COVID or anything. And all of a sudden, we're going to put it off again, you know? Really like to see effort now. Now. Expand the hours. Anything.
Just kind of answering some of your questions are, Tim and I have been working on this for a couple of months, at least, trying to put our documents together and get it right. Get everything that 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 we need and you folks asked for. We've been working on that. It's not like, it's not like it was the last minute decision to do this. We've been, we've been working hand in hand with this about several times. With law enforcement, that's what happens. Things has to be done at the at the crunch time. That's just the way law enforcement operates. We have been talking. We've been working. My undersheriff has been working diligently in making everything right that everybody wants. And we want that too. We want that too. We want it right. At the five years, get that right. One year in there, got that right. I'm okay with it. That's good. That's in there. My undersheriff worked up. And I respect your input. I do. You got to understand, I've been at this business for seven months.
You've been at this business for 33 years.
As a sheriff.
I know, but we voted for you.
Let me finish, please.
All right, go ahead.
I've been a sheriff for seven months. There's a learning curve here.
Yeah.
Jenny said it herself. It takes two, it takes more than two years to get to know what's going on. That's why you went to four years. And I agree with her. I'm at a learning curve. A lot of things that I have to learn. There's a lot of things I depend on these men for. I have 34 years and they wrote down, I can handle the move inside. No, I can do that. But being a sheriff is a special duty. Give me time to learn that. I went to sheriff's school and they said it takes a good year before you even get your hands wet and know what you're doing. Bear with me. I'm trying. I'm working hard. My heart's in this job. It's been there for 34 years. I'm not going nowhere. I'm going to work hard for my people, my people, the people that put me in office. I'm working very, very hard. And they know that. I hear it every day. Wherever I go, I hear. Um. Employment. I'm trying. I'm trying to hire people. People are not there to hire. I've reached out with other sheriffs. I've networked with other sheriffs. What is going on here? They're having the same problem, the same identical problem. No police officer of this day and age. And we all know about the wage and benefit. I'm not going to go down that road because.
I'm glad you're not.
That's, that's up to you folks and the unions.
Well, you're going to be a part of it this year.
I know. I know. That's a learning curve. I'm on the other end of the table.
Yeah.
That's a learning curve for me. Okay, so bear with me. I will get it right. I will get it right. Manpower. Craig, you were at the wards at two deputies faced with a long gun rifle that was loaded.
I get it.
That was a backup situation. I need backup. I cannot send our guys into a, into a house by themselves. I can't do it, Craig. I won't do it. I don't expect you to do it. They have to have the backup.
They call you then. It's crunch time. We got to get something going. You don't have two cops on the freeway anymore. And I'm thankful that we don't. I'm glad you didn't keep doing that.
Oh, I was totally against that when it started.
Yeah. And and I'm glad we're not doing that. But how did we ever get by when we had two cops way down there at 2:05?
We're down on people. We had 12 people. What do we got? What do we got? Seven, seven deaths? We're down on people. I don't have the manpower. I need manpower. And the only way that I can get my manpower is to pull from that jail good three qualified officers. And if that program works, if the if the money's in the budget, I would like to get another one pulled out there next year. That's my plan.
Well, I guess.
Qualified people.
I guess I got a question with that.
All right. But I.
Sheriff, I've talked.
Can I say one more thing?
No.
Having backup this day and age is so crucial with the drugs that is going on in our communities. I've got to have backup for my men. I'm not going to go there by myself. And I don't expect them people to do it either. So please, bear with me. I'll get it right. Just give me some.
I didn't mean that you you would go in by yourself. I'm saying.
I put myself in the shoes.
If you're the backup guy.
I would not ask them to do anything that I would.
Okay. No, I didn't mean that you would be the replacement to that guy going in. I'm saying if they need backup, then you make the backup or the or anybody, anybody, anybody that's a deputy or anybody that belongs.
Craig, I don't have the manpower.
Can we, can we, can we, anything that expands our soul that I can go to the public and say we're.
I'll tell you, I'll look at it. But I'll tell you right now, I am not, I am not a guy by himself working shift, working two, three hours by himself. I can't do it because.
Well, they work during the day by themselves. They're in the car by themselves. I see them driving around by themselves.
They have backup. They have backup. If there's something very, very crucial that I, that guns are flying, they're going to hold up until that other car gets, they're going to go in together.
I hope so. Yeah.
Well, you gave an explanation to, and he had a valid point, Commissioner Scott did at the last meeting. And you provided an explanation of what your plan was once these officers are are trained. And that was to pull one, one leader from, from A shift and one leader from B shift.
Right.
So basically, you provided us with a plan of how you are able to do this at this time. Pull one person from A shift, one person from B shift, and we're asking for a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, something. I mean, you told him the plan, which is something that you could initiate now from that one person from A and one person from B. You explained it yourself.
Well, let me, let me get into greater detail. We have a gentleman's agreement with MSP down there. We'll handle days, you handle nights. My plan is, if I pull one of my guys from days, one of my FPOs from days are 2:00, they're going to backfill my day shift with two of their people. That's the plan. That would, that would shorten us if I take the two out and put them up at night. I'm talking the same talk here. We're short, no backup. My plan is to get Lieutenant Brown down there to give me two people on days. And we've already talked about that. We have, we have monthly meetings with, 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 with the law enforcement, head law enforcement. We've talked about that. So we plan on doing it is pulling two, two troops on the day shift so I can slide two up. And that way, we're helping them at night. They're helping us at day.
But this has to happen in 22? In 2022? It can't happen this year?
If I pulled two out, that's only one rotation. Then I'd have to pull two from MSP. That would have to be talked about. We'd have to talk about that. And I'm not closing the door on that.
I get, I get the, I get the backup with the state police and everything else. But the taxpayers didn't pay for backup from state police. The taxpayer paid for 24-hour service, for service over the hours that we're doing. And we're not going to give the money to the state police for doing it. The taxpayer paid for the deputies.
I'm just saying that, that the only solution I see is to pull in them three, three individuals and possibly a fourth one next year. Because we cannot, we cannot hire people. People are not knocking at our door. And it's, and it's, it's like that throughout the whole state. So in, in Delta College, Delta College reached out and said they would give it to us at district cost. Our cost was 96.05. They're going to knock it down to district cost, just to help us out.
When they tell you that.
And that's, that's including.
When you, when they tell you.
I actually talked to them this morning. So that is factual. So the plat rate's going to be $8,194. They're going to give it to sponsored cadets, I think they're called. Um, they currently have 30 in this academy that's supposed to be starting soon. Three are from Ogumah. That's tentative. They did state that. But Mistress Serbrook, you had said, or Commissioner Serbrook, you had said at the last meeting that all of them were sponsored. That is not factual.
No.
Of the 30, out of the 30 that are in the academy, 12 to 15, she wasn't sure on an exact number, are sponsored. And three of them are, are ours. I did ask where the sponsored individuals were from. And she said Saginaw, Bay City, and Midland. So that is correct with your, your rate of, they are offering it to sponsors for $8,194.
That's, that's including.
So Sheriff, do you want to just pull from corrections entirely? I talked to.
Yeah, because they have police background.
Okay, okay. No, no, I talked to some other, I talked to some other law enforcement people. And they told me about certain counties and cities that pull only from corrections. That's how they do it. And they hire into corrections. And then they do a minimum stay.
They support our own people, our own, our own people.
I'm not, I'm not debating that. I'm just asking, is that the policy you want?
That's the policy I want.
Okay, so we're not going to hire off-the-street veteran officers?
I prefer not to. I prefer to put, I prefer to put hard.
We'll hire them into the directions.
We'll backfill them, you know? And if they, if they really truly want to put time and effort in Ogumah County, our county, who we are all proud of.
All right.
Then let them put the time in there to prove to us.
Fine, fine. I just want to know your policy on it.
I, I had a couple. You had told us, we've asked repeatedly as far as how you're attempting to recruit. And that's been in the last.
I'm sorry.
How, how you've been attempting to recruit officers. So we've been asking you at the last couple of meetings, and you had stated it was on MCOS, which it has not been since May. It was on there from November till May, and then it was stopped. So in the recruitment, I had seen it, the actual advertisement for MCOS, which was very generic and looked very, very, in my opinion, very non-appelling. So we have not been recruiting since May for seasoned officers. I am recommending for assisting with recruitment for your department, some type of sign now bonus, which I'm seeing a lot of. Say $3,000 sign-on bonus with a three-year contract to Ogumah County that then they're committed to Ogumah County for three years. Say, bringing these officers in with, like we've done for some of the others recently, bring their experience with them as far as where they're starting pay is versus brand-new into Ogumah County. So that would put them at a higher starting wage. I'm definitely recommending to assist with recruitment. I think we, we definitely need to work on recruiting some seasoned officers. I do think the 24 Road Patrol, I think we have pushed that. But the reason being is because we're getting pushed. I don't think we've asked for too much. Just give us one, two, three nights a week, something to residents. I think some standard of operations, the procedures needs to be fixed, some policies and procedures, job descriptions, all needs to be updated before we definitely go forward with this. Um, as far as the KCC and Delta, again, I have kind of voiced my opinion on that. KCC, it's in district. Unfortunately, we have to still pay those millages. So I think we should actually utilize those. And the female officer you got from KCC recently, I'm hearing is doing outstanding job. That is correct. Correct?
Absolutely. Wonderful job.
Okay, I've heard that. So, uh. And you had also mentioned at the Richland Township meeting about Michigan Works assisting with, with this academy.
I did, but we don't qualify. We looked at that again yesterday. And I don't think we're going to qualify for that. But we'll still continue trying, you know?
Yeah, because Mary said she had talked to you directly. And there was some options. So that changed yesterday?
As far as I know, it, I don't know if we're going to qualify for that. But we'll certainly give it a try and see what happens. Let's try. But if I can answer some of your questions.
I didn't really have any. I mean, you're more than welcome to. I didn't really have any, any questions.
I have a couple of things I'd like to add to that.
Please.
With that coming out of May, my fault, because when I entered that, it said it was going to stay in the MCOS until that position was filled. Apparently, that's not the case.
So you put it in in November? That was your advertisement?
I put that in, I put, there's a, there's a paper that, or there's a blank piece that you, you fill in and then they put it in, whatever they put in there.
So the advertisement is not yours directly, or it is?
I, I got hold of MCOS and then they, they're in charge of their, they're in charge of their website. So they put that in.
Because they're all different. Okay. Go ahead.
Um. But anyway, I got ahold of her a couple of days ago and it should be.
We see it's back on there now.
So I apologize for that because I thought that's going to be in your own time.
Well, I think to expound on that a little bit, Brian, what you're getting at is, take a look at some of the other departments and what they're putting in for content because they're. uh, departments and what they're putting in for content because they're, they're, they're very explain it.
Detailed.
Detailed. Thank you for that.
Ours is not very appealing.
Some, some have salary ranges, some have, the one I read, uh, it had a signing bonus on it, you know, and, and, uh, I've talked with Tim, there's a method we can do for something like that. But that would, that would mean you're probably not pulling through the, you don't wanna have that kinda thing to go through the corrections department because it wouldn't be.
That's all gonna be time. We don't know, we don't know who may, who may even apply, you know? There's a time ticket, it's ticket, where if we pull there, our time is coming to an end. We can get this thing rolling.
What time? I guess you lost me.
Time ticket, getting, getting our night shift rolling. If we put it out there and we're waiting, and we, and if we don't do that, if we don't promote them, then we're waiting at, at their, at anybody's mercy if they're gonna even apply. They may not even apply. You know, we're starting, starting out at eighteen eighty-four an hour.
But what I just recommended was, is, is also offering the sign-on bonus and starting these officers with their experience. With their experience comes the, uh, increase in pay, things that look more appealing.
Oh, Tim and I discussed that about coming in lateral, laterally into a different pay scale.
Yeah.
And what was said is that we gotta wait for negotiations before we do anything.
Which is.
So that, that, that has been, that has been discussed. But then you're talking time.
Your policy for corrections at that though. If, if they're at a higher level over there of rank, it would transfer over to the Sheriff's Department. Your policy reads that. So you're already putting it in without negotiation.
Just to clarify, that's an internal promotions considered because right now they're all the single unit.
Yeah.
And their contract, that can happen. If we're pulling from the outside right now, this gets to, to the point of getting at least a lot of.
What do we, what do we, uh, there isn't the same levels in each department?
Well.
Wage, cause they move.
Okay.
That's correct, Tim, this. In that policy, you're, you're not gonna reduce somebody's wage if they're making more corrections and they come to the roadside, you're not gonna reduce their wage. That's all that's happening right now.
Okay.
They're not gonna take a hit.
But if they're, if, if entry level depth is higher than what they're already making, are they gonna escalate because they're old rank?
No.
So. Okay. Is that correct?
Yeah.
From what you're saying.
Brad, you have something?
Um, well, I definitely agree with the, uh, the sign-on bonus or whatever, um, it's called these days. Um, and whatever we gotta do to get officers in here, cause I mean, although I think, uh, the program at the jail is a good idea. Um, I don't think we should, um, just depend on that, cause that will take a lot of time to get those officers on the road. I mean, they're not gonna get through the program until what, December? And then, then you talk another three, four months probably before they're on their own. I mean, they probably would be with another officer at night. Um, but, uh, you know, putting a, putting an offer out there and, uh, a detailed, uh, description of the job, I think we definitely, uh, maybe create some more interest depending on how much we wanna make that. And, uh, I'd also consider, um, dropping the resource officer for this year, or at least until we can get the twenty-four hour coverage. Um, because I don't really feel that, uh, we can afford to tell the taxpayer we're, we're not twenty-four hours, but yet put a, put an officer in the school.
Let me, let me, let me say something for weapon now. If we pull that resource officer out, something happens at that school, it's on us.
Well, that's not, that's not the only school in our district, and we only have one officer in that school. I said, that's not the only school we have.
Absolutely, but at, at least it's three.
And before, before we had somebody there, I mean, I know what you're saying, but we didn't always have an officer there to begin with.
Times are different now.
Yeah, I know. Well, times are different, times are different after nine o'clock at night too. All right. I mean, most of your violent crimes happen after ten o'clock in the morning. And I think we need to take a real, real strong look at when we're, when we have our officers on the road, even if it's not twenty-four hours. Um, I just, I don't agree with you on that early morning stuff. I, I don't think that we're looking at this hard enough.
Early, early morning stuff is when serious things happen.
Yeah.
The various, Brad, I've been doing this job for thirty-four years. I know one, I know one real serious.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the statistics of crime, okay? And that, they're, it's not agreeing with what you're saying. Most of your violent crime does not happen in the morning.
It may not be a crime. It may be a vehicle in a, in a ditch is rolled over that needs, needs assistance.
That happens all through the day.
Domestic assaults, anything.
Accidents like that happen all through the day.
I, I wanna read this so that way in case there's any, I wanna read all this in entirety in case there's any other questions. This is the resolution to authorize attendance at Delta College Police Academy. This resolution is sponsored by the Ogama County Sheriff to send three corrections facilities, create three correction facility employees to the Delta College Police Academy. Like many municipalities across the state and nation, the Ogama County Sheriff's Office has experienced difficulty finding qualified candidates to fill regular full-time sheriff deputy positions. Sponsorship of Police Academy trainees is a str- strategy for bolstering the ranks of law enforcement. If approved, this resolution would authorize enrollment of Corrections Corporal Shane Oger, Corrections Officer Wyatt Barrett, and Corrections Officer Michael Scholes in the academy cohort beginning later in August. When discussed at the August second committee of the whole meeting, Corrections Lieutenant Brian Oger discussed and affirmed the qualifications of all three candidates who were not named. However, Lieutenant Oger did not disclose his familial connection to his son, Correction Corporal Shane Oger. The school, disclosure of a familiar relationship, even in situations where no conflict of interest exists, will eliminate future conjectures about legitus me, legitus law of an official act. The August second oversight is not fatal to the proposal, but full public disclosure of a familial relationship should be made in order to promote full public transparency. The proposed resolution was drafted in a way that makes clear the board's intention to recoup its substantial educational investment through subsequent service to Ogama County residents. Additionally, the resolution should not be viewed as a Kiro solution to staffing challenges. The sheriff will need to initiate an aggressive recruitment effort using all available media in order to fill open positions. Even with the dedicated millage dollars available, it is unlikely the county will be in a position to send three individuals to a training academy in the future, in future years. If approved, this resolution should result in guaranteed addition of well, of three well-trained law enforcement officers. I wanted to read that out loud. Is there any further discussion on that?
Well, I, I'd just like to say something in regards to the non-disclosure. Some of that may be on me because I've been an advocate of not naming names so that we're not prejudicial one way or the other by saying, you know, you and it may or may not have had a positive experience with somebody. And I would, you know, I just wanna look at somebody's qualifications. I, so some of that may be not me.
So we asked for qualifications and they were verbal. They show up to work and a good work ethic.
No, I, I understand that. I'm just saying that some of that may be on me.
Well, I gotta say too, and I think, I think, uh, I think some people misunderstand when I say I don't like to hear names. I, I don't think that when we talk about allocating positions, we allocate to a name. But, but when we award somebody, we wanna know their name. When we transfer somebody, we wanna know their name. If we promote somebody, we wanna know their name. I think in light of the whole year and everything else, that not only just this year, last year was a big focus because it was election year and we knew there was gonna be names come out because of the results of the election. So we wanted, we started right off beginning of this year. Let's get all this out in the open so that if we know it ahead of time, and then I go, we all go to township meetings. We all get hit with questions. I got a township clerk over here that can tell you that backed me up that I get asked questions. And, and, and it, it's just like, we say to our employees, you put a dent in the car, just say you did. The last thing I wanna do is walk out and see a dent in the car.
I agree.
You know, that's all we're saying.
Been addressed, so we're, we're good there.
That's all we're saying. We're not, we're not trying to, we're not ta- talking about personalities. We're not talking about, uh, experience levels. We're not talking about anything. Just talking about, you know, look at, look at me, Craig Scott. There was a commissioner named Scott. There was a deputy named Scott. There was all kinds. I'm not related to any of them. But if I was, I should make it out clear that I am. You know, that's all, that's all we're asking.
Can I say something?
That's a experiment.
First of all, I didn't select the three candidates. They put in for, their disciplinary stuff was issued to the sheriff. He was told what their work ethic was, that they come to work, that come on work on time, that they do a good job. He selects those candidates. It wasn't for me to disclose anything. If you would've asked me who those candidates were, I would've told you. You didn't ask. It's not, not for me to do.
I'm sorry, you do need to do that. Uh, anytime we have any of our employees who are up promoting anything, it's best to just simply disclose it. That's it. It takes any question.
All I was asked was about the process and what you was working, not who the candidates were.
You were in here advocating for it.
For the program. I was advocating.
You should have exited from the program for open discussion.
Program before the program was installed.
Understand, we can argue, we can argue this all day long, but again.
Do anything underhand. Nobody.
Anytime we vote on something, Ryan, we always disclose if we're, if we have any connection to that person, to that group, we have to disclose it. Um, and, and at the same time, I think when we talked about, um, this program, um, you were one of the determining factors in who we selected. It wasn't just gonna be the sheriff or you, it was gonna be, I thought, all three of you guys. We're gonna make that determination. So you're actually involved in it.
I, I put over if they're a good candidate for it. Yes.
And, and we're not saying that, that you guys made the wrong decision, but anytime that you have a possible conflict of interest.
Let him finish.
Just so this board knows.
Sir, please. Brad, are you done?
I thought he was.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm just saying that we've, we, I've had bids come in from, from people that I was related to. I disclosed that beforehand and either voted on it or didn't vote on it, depending on how I felt about the situation. But I made sure that everybody knew what my relationship was with that, with that person.
And that's fine. But just so this board knows, I talked, I tried to talk my son out of it. I had nothing to do with him deciding he wanted to do this, but he is more than qualified. Well, now, if I, I may say, what better way to separate? Let's, let's get Shane Oger out of the jail, out of that building and get him in a different building to where he's got different supervisors. That's the best way to separate it for sure.
Well, you know, the whole thing, we, we're not asking you even to come to this meeting and say this. Once again, the administrator is the board, the, the board of commissioners.
Oh, I, yeah.
Every, anything at all, he'll disseminate it to us.
Well, I, I.
I, I understand the reluctance of an open.
I, I didn't say, I didn't say a name ba- basically, to be honest with you, Craig. The reason why I don't say names is because you were pretty adamant. I don't want, you remember, if you remember December, I don't want, you were pretty boisterous on, I don't want.
I know, I know. But I understand why I said that. It's for allocating positions. It's not for promotions, uh, awards or anything else.
But these three men that put in for this positions are qualified to do the job. They passed the pre-test in an A round, A and B, I believe, to them, A, one, one B, and I don't even know who, but all I know, they passed, Delta opened up that day specifically for these three men to go do the pre-test. They did it. They're accommodating, they accommodated Ogama County Sheriff's Office. They opened up that, that facility that day for these guys only. So they're very accommodating for us.
Didn't the KCC academic director reach out to the undersheriff herself as well?
You would have to direct that question.
Correct, undersheriff?
Yes. We've had email requests.
Okay, so they have also reached out and attempt to recruit our officers in, in this program, correct?
I wanna send them to Delta. I, I think it's a better program. It's my opinion. It's, it's my opinion. I went there. I know, I know what they do down there. Um, the people of Ogama County voted me to make the decisions, good decision, good sound decisions, and that's my decision on that. So I don't, I don't know what else to tell you. It is that we need that program to get our night shift up and running. We'll look into possibly mixing things up. It's not out of the question.
I, I was just asking as far as what, why Delta versus Kirtland? You graduated from Kirtland, correct? Or did you just say you, you graduated from Delta? You did? Okay. Um, now that individual that you were discussing with us last week that was very green, as you said repeatedly, extremely green.
Yes.
Is gonna require a lot of work.
Yes.
Am I wrong stating she graduated from Delta?
Delta too, but.
Okay.
Each individual is different, is different.
You're a hundred percent right on that.
She's gonna be, she's gonna be a good, a good fit. She will. We, we just have to train her. And I want green people to come to me because I wanna mold them. I wanna train them for Ogama County. I wanna train them for Saginaw or whatever. I want them green so I can mold.
Oh, that's not what you stated at the fair board meeting three months ago. I, 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 it's not what you said, but.
I wasn't at the fair board.
You were. You were there about three or four months ago.
What really does that have to do with it?
Because you stated you wanted seasoned officers. You weren't looking for new officers. You were there, but.
Well, I have to take what I get.
Okay. And I'm all in favor of, of sending one. I think this is a pilot program. I think we can start with one and see how it goes. Um, but it's, it's, you're.
Get us mentioned.
So it's these.
But I, I just don't think we should put our eggs in all in one basket. I think we should, uh, work on.
Money's in the budget.
Yeah, yeah, I know. The money's also in the budget to look elsewhere through MCOS and other, other, um, social media sites with a signing bonus or whatever Tim calls it.
Um, but it, it could be, it could be six months before, even if you put that out there, six months before.
Well, it's gonna be at least six months before we can even get anyone from the.
I'd rather have something sure and have somebody have them in training and put out there what the people want. People, the people voted to put him in charge of this. I don't wanna micromanage his department. And I understand we're looking at budgets and whatnot, but it's in the village and we need to get these people trained and we need them on the new road.
You're a hundred percent right, Commissioner Van. It is up to our sheriff. So then why are we coming up with ideas to get officers? Why are we coming up with a sign-on bonus? Why are we, we asking, where are we advertising? Where, what are we doing?
Personally, if I was him, I'd have had these three officers in training already. He tried way back, right after he took over and said it was too close to school to put officers in training. He'd had some officer strength already.
So you wanted us to.
Down.
No, it did not get shot down. He never brought us a plan.
Correct.
Okay, by the time he'd have got the plan together, it would have been well past the time to put him in school.
You wanted to approve something with no plan?
It was in the village. The money's in the village.
Well, wait a minute now, you, you told us at one meeting that you wanted to go through a, a, a committee as a whole meeting before you made any motions. You didn't want them, you didn't want them, uh, you didn't wanna, you didn't want to vote on anything then unless we discuss it in the community's whole meeting.
We had discussed it.
All right.
Time. At a meeting.
I don't think we're micromanaging. I don't think that, I, I, I understand there is one sheriff. I got the message. There's one sheriff. There's not five, but work of board of commissioners. We're supposed to have ideas. This is all check and balance. We're supposed to work together. We got a job too. And, and the Sheriff's Association told them that. You gotta work together. Am I, am I right? Sheriff, they told you, you, you're working with commissioners, right? That's government.
That's right.
It's not private business. It's not private business. I mean.
I, I'm trying hard to work for you folks, for the people of Bogomah County. That's who we represent.
I get that, Sheriff. I get that. But like you were up at Foster the other night. They ask you, why don't you just spend the money and do it? Well, because there's thresholds, because it's five thousand dollars. You can't just spend without, because if, if we didn't have that, we may have a department head that's of another department that would just go out and blow their whole budget in the first day of the year.
I, I have to say one thing. Yeah, it's expensive. It's very, very expensive to have road patrol. Very expensive.
Yes.
But I will tell you, when people are running out of a building, we're running in and you gotta pay for them people to do that.
Sir.
They will take a bullet. My men and myself will take a bullet for each one of you guys. That's our job. We will do it.
You and I, you and I share duty on, on a fire department.
Absolutely.
I did it, you did it.
You know exactly.
And I, I know exactly what you're talking about, when everybody else is running out, we're running in, you know, I get that part, man, I really do. And, and, and those guys that received those awards deserved every bit of it the other day, you know? I don't have a problem with that at all, you know, but everything costs money.
Thank you for you and Mark being there, I appreciate that, that, that means a lot to them both.
But everything costs money, and I know it costs a lot of money, I mean, the sheriff's office is 40% of, of an $11 million budget. You know, I mean, that's what takes more critiquing, because you, you're much bigger.
Just let me do it, I'm learning.
Let us, let us help you, let us help you with not only suggestions, but tools like, like the administrator. Use them.
Tim and I, Tim and I sit in, in his office, he comes to my office, we've got a good, we've got a good relationship, I think, we do real well together.
Good, keep it up, we want you to.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what else to tell you, that, that's, that's my, that's, that's my take.
Adam, Sheriff, may I speak?
Um, not, 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 no.
Well, there's a motion on the table, I guess.
Any other discussion? We'll call vote.
Can I be guaranteed we're going to have 24-hour service? If we send three, there's 24-hour service January 1.
I will guarantee you that.
You're in public meetings on the record, guaranteed.
I will guarantee that.
All right.
Roll call vote. Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
No.
Jenny David.
No.
Craig Scott.
This is a show of my kindness, yes.
Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Don't let it be my weakness.
Item 7B, resolution to affirm voluntary bargaining agent recognition. This resolution is sponsored by the sheriff and county administrator, the police officers labor council recently petitioned the Michigan Employment Relations Commission to represent all non-supervised supervisor, supervisory road deputies and supervisory personnel at the sheriff's office. The current labor representative Teamsters Local 214 voluntary withdrew from the election and as bargaining agent for these units, voluntary recognition of P O L C by the sheriff and board of commissioners will help to expedite the transition from Teamsters 214. Tim, can you explain this?
Well, if there's not voluntary recognition, my understanding and talking to Marcus, they would be then obligated to have an election. And then after the election, they have to tally the votes, and the bottom line is, it would probably be a good 30 days before the P O L C would actually sit down at the bargaining table and begin bargaining. That puts us in mid-September, the contract expires on September 30th. Uh, this would at least help us get to the table sooner rather than later. Uh, the, being that there's only one uh, labor representative in the running out of the P O L C, it's frankly a foregone conclusion, the cards have been submitted already. Um, therefore, we're just, I'm just recommending, I believe I can speak for the sheriff too, we're recommending that we do the voluntary recognition and get this thing moving.
Motion to adopt a resolution is presented.
Motion from Commissioner Cerber, support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the resolution to affirm voluntary bargaining agent recognition. Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call vote. Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Item 7F, resolution to approve replacement of transit building septic system, can you explain, Tim?
I can, there was a problem with drainage or something that prompted Ray out of transit to do a little bit more investigating. When they uncovered the septic, they discovered there was a, a part of the actual physical septic tank that had failed. And there is no other option but to replace it outright. Uh, Ray has gone ahead and secured the quotes to do that, you see the two of them attached, the quote from the 7440 quote.
Yeah.
Yeah. Was the low bid, and this is also based on the inspection of the health department and with compliance, complete compliance with the health code. And they actually physically locate this to a different side of the building, which is actually more efficient. So there's a lot of positives to it coming out of the septic failure. Uh, this is not really an option, it has to be replaced. Uh, we were fortunate with the timing that we were able to bring it here, otherwise we would have had to invoke that emergency purchase paragraph in the purchasing policy and would have been finding out about it after the fact. But fortunately, with your meeting schedule and the, the bids coming when they did, that we, we have it here, we can have full discussion.
Motion to adopt the resolution is presented.
I support.
Motion from Commissioner Cerber with support from Commissioner Newbecker to approve the resolution to approve replacement of transit billing septic system, is there any discussion on this?
I just want to add to what Tim said, I, I talked to Monica Anshus from the health department in regards to this, and he said no way fans of what's about it, that prior one was in failure mode and definitely needs to be done, so.
If we get the deep stuff, I'd just soon do it.
Roll call vote. Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Resolution approved, resolution uh, uh, 7G, resolution to accept a quote for additional renovations work at, at the day treatment facility. Ooh, that's costly.
It is, in this case, we have two problems, number one, the trusses on the building were apparently not engineered correctly. This was discovered after, uh, after the renovation started and our building inspector went over and realized that, um.
Mr. Scott.
I'm sorry.
Realized the difficulty that was there. Um, the, the contractor did consider a fix to the trusses themselves that might have worked, but in the end, they just determined that just new trusses were what was actually going to be necessary. The second item, and this is our most feared stage of a project like this, is when they got the walls taken out to replace, they realized, uh, I believe it's on the west wall, that rather than having two-by-four studs and insulation in there, they were just simply two-by-twos. And the explanation is that that used to be a car wash, and when the car wash component of it was taken down, they just quickly put this new wall up and that was the end of it, well, we have to bring that up quote as well. And of course, we would like insulation too, so that's a part of this cost. Yes, it is costly, and that's why it's here, it's beyond the contingency that we have planned for the building. Um, we are at an interesting stage. Um, you could, as a board, adopt to just scrap the project right now if you wanted to. I don't recommend that because you're going to be out, not only the, the expense that's already been into the building, but there are also some materials that we'd be responsible to pay for and possibly not have any use for.
Do we have a dollar figure?
Forty-four thousand eighty-five.
No, 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 I'm talking about where, where we're at right now, we were to say we're scrapping the project, do we know how much, even the ballpark figures, what we would object worth construction?
You would owe him at least 30,000, based on my phasing of the, of what we have with the budget. Uh, and there is a, a fee if we scrap that, it's like a termination fee that's in that contract too. But we would probably be at a wash, so if we said, that's it. Um, you know, the 44,000 you see here, you could either pay this, or that's what it's going to probably cost us to scrap it. But remember, for whatever that is, you have nothing then to show for that money on this.
Yeah, I personally think we should have done what Craig, I talked way back in the beginning, we should have pulled those down and set, set a modular there or a modular someplace on Oklahoma's property and, and had a new building and I'd had to mess with all this.
Once again, I say to people, they should listen to me more often.
I'm going to pass this resolution to go ahead and pay, or I'm going to make a motion to pass this resolution to accept a call for additional renovations work at the daytime treatment facility. We've already got that much money invested. Any support?
Well, I'd like to say that, um, I didn't agree with this project to begin with. And I thought we should have looked at building a new treatment center and adding on and, and all sheriff's office at the same time. Um, because that is obviously not in very good condition either. Um, but seeing as we got $30,000 already into this project, I think we have to finish it now. So I will support.
We have a motion with support to approve the resolution to accept a call for additional renovations work at the daytime treatment uh, facility, that's a $44,085, correct? Need for the discussion on that?
Uh, Tim, did you talk to Judge Williams at all?
About this? No.
I was just curious. Well, you know, I did some ballpark figures on, say, just a, a modular home, you know, um, brought in and, and stuff and, and they were talking about the same amount of money as practically about the original quote. With all this, it'll be a pretty much a brand new building, I don't know, it won't be brand new, but it um, yeah, I, I, I don't know, I I, I learned, I learned that we had a lot over on Seventh Street walk over, and I thought it would have been a good spot. Uh, go ahead.
Any other discussion?
Call for the vote.
Well, I, I mean, I, I basically heard through the grapevine that DeBoltz and Jones over here would like to purchase that little building over there that, that files are kept in, we've got an empty jail sitting over here, that the files could be moved over there. Sell that to them, take that money and recoup this $40,000, tear that down and get your modular built someplace for the same price, and, and then you'll have a new building. I, I think you're just putting good money after bad, I.
But the other thing is, is the timeframe, I mean, how.
I understand the timeframe, but.
Okay, I was going to finish. So was the timeframe, I mean, everything you're talking about sounds, sounds well, but as far as where things are at today and how long everything's taken, we've already put this project on hold for, for quite a period of time. We have this monies now for this, this uh, American Rescue Plan Act that this is going to be utilized for, correct, Tim?
Right.
For infrastructure, um, this goes for our kids in this community. Um, which it sounds like the judge is on, has been on board with, along with friend of the court, and, and they've all been very well involved in this project. Um, and with this comes criteria as far as what they have to have in that building, so I don't think it's, and, and I could be wrong, but I don't think it's a module that you could just go pick off of a lot, there has to be certain things for, like the overnight um, aspect, so.
Well, I think, um, you know, the building's sort of been approved for the service that it needs to be. And I also agree with Ron, um, there's a, there's some property over there that we could probably put out for bid. Um, and that would obviously, um, take some of the cost away.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Cerber.
No.
Ron Vaughn.
No.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Resolution carries, item 7H claims. Total of, is that right, 127,624.88?
I, I reviewed the claims along with, uh, Mr. Cerber. Um, one of the big ones that stuck out, and I questioned, uh, commissary was up almost $15,000. Um, they purchased e-cigarettes for the, the inmates, I, I talked to Lieutenant Oger on that. Um, they quadruple, quadruple get that much money back, um, I think the e-cigarettes roughly cost $3 a piece and they sell.
$4.25.
Or, is that what, and they, and they get $12, they get $12 a piece for them, so I mean, it, it seems like a big expense, but they, they do recoup a whole lot more than that. Uh, it's a council was high, normally is.
What's the administrator, 10,200?
We had a invoice comment for the capital improvement plan. It's a $17,000 project and that's, will be reimbursed by Department of Treasury.
And the treasurer's office was the S and A software, so, um, I make a motion, we, uh, approve the point, support.
We have a motion with support to approve to pay claims for 127,624.88. Any further discussion? A roll call vote. Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries, item A, unfinished business, 8A, internal investigation report follow-up, uh, Mr. Mehan, I see you're on the phone.
Sorry, I had a hard time pressing the button, yes, I am.
That's okay, did you want to take the lead on this?
Yeah, um, what I wanted to do is, um, talk to the board and, um, bring the board up to speed in terms of since our last meeting, uh, and, uh, also, number two, is let the board know uh, that, you know, the issues that were raised in the investigative letter uh, uh, of events or occurrences or problems, uh, that, uh, predated the sheriff taking the job. Um, I, I thought that it would be appropriate for the board to inquire, uh, going forward as to the acts and actions being taken by the sheriff to, uh, look at those issues and to ensure that those issues are resolved, uh, aren't happening, uh, and will not happen on, uh, his watch. So the first thing is, is that I have completed the delivery of the report to the um, Attorney General's Office, to the state police, uh, and I will be completing that delivery to the FBI today. Um, I will be talking with Tim on how we, uh, deliver the lien issue for them to consider an investigative report, uh, and how, whether or not the lien investigative body would also be looking into the use of computer systems by, uh, a officer or enforcement person to, uh, look at other enforcement agencies' work. Um, so that's number one, and number two, uh, is going forward, I think it would be appropriate for the board, when the sheriff has an opportunity to speak, to question and, and ask him for an update on each of those items, uh, that are in the report, again, as I said, that we had found, um, that there were alleged issues and problems, and, and at least have him, um, carefully, uh, inform you and make you comfortable and make the public comfortable that those issues, uh, either never existed, don't exist, or are not going forward to exist, uh, so that the department can have the reputation it deserves. And so that's my report at this point in time, and I do have a COVID-19 update I'd like to give to the board when you are done on this question.
What specific, uh, what, I guess, uh, what specific findings were you recommending as far as more information?
Well, for instance, there were an allegation that there was, uh, too close of a relationship between sheriff, uh, enforcement officers and vendors, and that that relationship would, uh, allow those sheriff enforcement officers to have uh, opportunities that the general public would not have to purchase or, or get benefit of certain things. And so one of the questions that I think is important to ask is to what degree, um, has that been looked at? What policies are in place, uh, that will fix that going forward to ensure, uh, that that doesn't happen? And how those activities or actions, um, uh, will be reviewed and ensured that it don't, they don't occur? Number two is, I think, on lien issue, I think it's important for the, uh, the sheriff to be reminded, and he is, of, of the lien obligations, I think it's important for there to be a program whereby the, um, the, the enforcement officers are in, are informed of the requirements of lien, uh, reminded of the requirements, uh, and a mechanism by which someone can anonymously complain about their view that a lien violation is occurring so that the sheriff can get on it right away and fix it and not allow it to continue to, to go by. I think that it's important also that the sheriff engage in reviewing with all of his officers, the SOPs. Um, I have found that over, over time, after you've been, uh, uh, an enforcement officer for a while, uh, you tend to have lost sight on some of the SOPs, the requirements, uh, some of the details. uh, you tend to have lost sight on some of the SOPs, the requirements, uh, some of the details of them. And I think that that is a, a process, uh, that should be, uh, asked about. There should be a process and procedure in place for that to occur so that, um, again, uh, the department can be reborn. And then there are the other allegations that are, that are in there, um, that, you know, I could go on and and raise those, but uh, what I can do for the board is provide that list and we can put that on the agenda and then give the sheriff an opportunity and notice for the next meeting to be able to comment on those. But I just think it will improve the comfort level that you all need to have about the department moving forward. I think it will have an opportunity for the sheriff to express that he is, uh, looking to do the things that he says he is doing and running a good sheriff's department. And I think if we can put all of those issues behind us uh, and know that they are behind us and know that there is a watchdog, so to speak, uh, the sheriff, and know that there are policies and procedures that are being followed, I think that comfort level, uh, can occur.
Are you guys okay with that? Sheriff and undersheriff? Okay. Uh, Greg, can you put together that list then and we'll put that on the committee of the whole?
Absolutely. I, I'll press send right now and send it to Tim. I was just waiting for your approval.
Uh, what COVID update did you want to provide, Greg?
Uh, the COVID update I wanted to provide to you is, is as follows. As you know, there's been conflicting, uh, information that continues to come from the CDC, uh, from Washington, uh, and even from our own, um, state legislature and our governor. And, um, you may remember two weeks ago as the Delta virus was, um, starting to take hold that there was, okay, we want masks to be placed back on, um, vaccinated people while they are in public areas where others are involved, are in closed settings where others are involved in high-risk areas, um, where COVID nineteen is an issue. Um, this past week, uh, the advice and the guidance has come out, uh, that, uh, because almost the entire United States quote is deemed to be in a high-risk area, that we are now, uh, mandating a guideline that requires that, you know, inside business offices where there is close proximity vaccinated and unvaccinated, um, employees and people should be wearing a mask, uh, to better protect against the COVID nineteen, um, and Delta, uh, variants. So that's where the new guidelines are coming out and they should come out at the end of this week on Friday. I will tell you that, uh, it's being fought across the country. Uh, the vaccinated, uh, people, uh, feel, and I believe correctly that because they are vaccinated, they should not have to wear a mask, but I think that there is an importance uh, for unvaccinated people to wear masks, uh, when they are in closed settings, indoors, uh, and in public spaces where there are large, uh, a number of people. Now, two other things that I think are important, uh, employers are allowed to ask employees if they are vaccinated and they are allowed to ask employees for a vaccination card. Uh, if the employee refuses to provide that card or, um, claims that they're not vaccinated, that's how uh, municipality, uh, an employer can, um, cover or at least protect themselves and be in compliance with the OSHA regulations. Um, and OSHA is on the hunt, so to speak. I don't mean that publicly to be a demeaning comment, but they are responding to anonymous complaints that are filed more often than not now by employees who are vaccinated and who are complaining about the governments that they work for who don't enforce the mask guideline, uh, for unvaccinated people and, um, who, uh, don't provide safe environment. So my advice to, um, Ogumah County is to follow the practice of unvaccinated people. Uh, wear a mask while they are in indoors, uh, wear a mask when they are in public settings with large numbers of people. Uh, but they probably can relieve them of the mask-wearing, uh, process, uh, if they are in a closed office or in other areas of that nature. And vaccinated people, um, do not at this point need to wear masks. And I believe that the municipality of Ogumah County has the ability to ask employees if they have, uh, a vaccination card, uh, and, uh, if they provide it, then they are good. If they don't provide it, they are deemed to be unvaccinated. Now, I know this is a highly charged, uh, political issue, um, and I know it becomes a highly charged personal issue uh, on it, uh, but I, I just wanted to relay to you the cold, hard facts. There are two, uh, exemptions, um, to requiring people to be vaccinated. So, uh, in the other realm of the world, employers do have the right and the governments do have the right to compel employees to be vaccinated if you so choose to do so. I think that's a little draconian, but it is, it seems to be the wave of the future, both at the federal government level and starting to get at the state level. And, um, the EEOC and the governmental law does, again, allow municipalities and employers to mandate people be vaccinated with two exceptions. The first exception is that the person has a medical condition that prevents them from getting that vaccination, or two, that they have a religious exception, uh, to vaccinations. In other words, the religion they believe in, uh, or participate in, um, indicates that vaccinations and other types of things are not appropriate for, uh, the person. So in summary, uh, vaccinated people, uh, are still able to operate in a manner without masks, although it is suggested that they wear them uh, indoors and in public. Unvaccinated people are suggested to wear masks at all times at work and in, uh, public areas. And employers are allowed and municipalities are allowed to ask for a vaccination card so that they can determine who is or who isn't vaccinated, but you can't go any further than that or you then start to trample the HIPAA rights that an individual has. And then finally, uh, municipalities and employers do have a right to compel all people become vaccinated, subject to do two exceptions that I have. Uh, but again, I think that is a, a little draconian. Uh, and on a medical side, I know that you are probably well aware of this, uh, uh, Chairman, that, uh, we are finding out that this Delta variant is really weird in the sense that it has just dropped off almost in places like Europe after having a high rate of infection. So, um, the, the, the people in the know are, are looking at whether or not that similarly would happen in the United States. But that's the updated, uh, update that I can give you as of today, uh, as a result of committee meetings that I participated in from eight o'clock until nine fifteen, when I got off to then join you all, uh, in your meeting. And I apologize, I couldn't join right at nine o'clock.
Tim?
Greg, a quick question on the issue of mask. I frankly boil this down to an all or nothing option for the county because we have so much public coming in and out of our buildings, uh, to just say that our employees, if you're vaccinated, you don't need to be masked. If you're not, you do. I have no way to, to test at the door whether or not somebody is vaccinated. So I, I I would argue that we're better off either everybody masks or nobody masks.
Well, I, that was the last point I was gonna go at in terms of the public, right? Um, I wanted to first start with the employees, but with the public, you're right. Uh, and I have been advising all of the municipalities that I represent in Michigan and other where that, uh, the public as a whole, when they come in, must mask up and, um, you know, we must have disinfectant available for them and we must practice social distancing. And in that regard, um, you've met the CDC requirement. And then the next question becomes will the person from the public coming in be comfortable meeting with someone who is not masked but claims they're vaccinated? And how this has been done, um, in many of the municipalities in Michigan is that person not wearing a mask who is meeting with a person who is from the public required to wear a mask, whether they are are, are not vaccinated, um, usually puts on a mask every time. And I think, I think your way is the right way. Or they ask that, uh, public person if, if they would prefer, uh, that they put a mask on or not. So there are two different parts of this. One is what you can comply or require from an employee perspective. Uh, and of course you can comply and require all employees wear a mask. Uh, and the second is what do you require from the public? Cause you don't want to hire somebody to hand, stand at the door and say, um, unlike New York City, let me see your vaccination card to permit you entry into a public building. And so what you do is you have to trust, um, the people coming in to follow the rules or you just mandate masks all the time. And I believe you were right publicly, people coming in should wear masks all the time to protect the employees. And I think that it would be safer, uh, unless discriminatory, uh, and not in a legal sense, but in a, in a practical sense that all employees wear masks, uh, while they're at work or at least wear masks while they are, uh, engaging with the public, if, even if they're vaccinated.
I disagree with that, but I probably should abstain from this conversation. I, I think it should be optional. I, I think it should be readily available. Anybody, any employee or any public individual that wants to walk in, have masks, um, hand sanitizer, um, until it's absolutely mandated. Um, I think it should be optional.
Well, um, uh, Chairman, you are correct, though. The one thing that we all must remember, these are guidelines, these are not laws. The only real laws that exist out there is OSHA. And OSHA has this one standard that they are using to, quote, bust employers and governmental entities. And that is that you cannot maintain a, a environment that is hazardous to your employees. And so what they have done is they've used that section, which is three, three, nine, oh, one, to say that an employer that does not have a COVID plan does not have social distancing, does not have disinfectant, does not have some determination of mask-wearing based upon a reasonable um, view is placing their people at risk and creating a hazardous environment. Again,
We have everything that he just named, correct?
You do.
We have a plan in place. We have, so we have everything. So we're okay from a legal standpoint at this point in time.
Right, we have
You are.
The most recent resolution was to suspend, uh, the social distancing mask based on, uh, prior advice. The policy does have a section in there, uh, because we, we do sometimes have to act quickly, but you've allowed me to make a decision until your next meeting to do, you know, consider a motion to do something different. So if, for instance, MDHHS were to come out this afternoon with a masking requirement, we will uh, apply it and then bring a resolution back to your next meeting that says we're recognizing this and updating our plan yet again. So that's, that's in play. I'm still a little confused though on the OSHA, uh, requirement. So Greg, you're telling us they're enforcing the vaccinated versus unvaccinated masking component. Is that right?
Well, they're doing it a different way. They're doing it in the sense that they're saying to municipalities, so if you have people coming in and you don't have a plan or program for those individuals that the public coming in, that you can, uh, protect the employees that have to work with them, then you are subjecting them to a hazardous, uh, environment a- at the workplace. And the question becomes, you know, um, well, does the mask-wearing policy that we have for employees that is optional for vaccinated and unvaccinated work? And does the, uh, policy that we have for the public coming in the door, not wearing a mask or requiring wearing a mask work? And it really depends upon, with all due respect, the OSHA investigator you get and the complaint that occurs and whether or not there have been, um, uh, situations. We had one just recently, not too far from you where the employee complained that the public was allowed to come in, um, cough, be sick and, and otherwise place, uh, that employee at risk even though she was vaccinated and even though she wore a mask. And, uh, OSHA made me go through a number of hoops ultimately to determine that the policies, procedures and processes uh, were appropriate for, um, that municipality. So I just, I, I, again, there's no hardcore answers. I think we pick what we are going to do and you have and you follow what you are going to do and you have, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to bring this to your attention as the, uh, variant, the Delta variant continues to raise havoc that we are seeing the changes that occur, um, uh, each time. That's it.
We have the safety barriers out for employees, correct?
Yes. Yep.
And I mean, you know, I'm, I'm wondering just to make sure that the line of communication is open for any employees that do not feel safe in their work environment can either go to their, uh, supervisor or to you and voice their concerns.
Excellent point, excellent point.
That open line of communication. We have something in writing that states that they've had that opportunity.
Uh, it might trigger frankly is gonna be our local health department and MDHHS if they say, we need everybody to mask or they have some other variation of that, we're gonna do that, uh, you know, and then we'll bring it back to the board for, uh, disclosure later on. So I mean, that truly is my trigger and failing that, I'd, I'd be reluctant to just throw that out.
Tim, just be mindful of the fact, though, that DHHS is a state organization and OSHA is a federal. And, uh, both as we've seen with regard to marijuana and any of the other important issues in this world, the, the federal government and the state government don't often believe the same thing. And so you could be following DHHS's guidelines, uh, and be in violation of OSHA's. Now, you're not at this point. I just want you to be mindful of the, the balance that you have to do, sir. Um, and I will guide you and, and guide, uh, your departments, uh, and all of the departments at Ogumah County on it. But I just want you to hear it from me so that it's not the first time you've heard that there are two different governmental entities that are out there trying their best to make disclaimers and guidances and they're not the same. They truly are not.
Confusion.
Then you throw in my OSHA.
Yeah.
Are we good? Tim, are you clear?
We are good. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Administrative report, Tim?
A few things. First, I just want to let you know we had a department head meeting this past Monday. We had, uh, Bethany Verbal from the Inter Accounting Firm in to do a, a presentation on fraud detection. Very interesting, uh, presentation. Uh, this also follows into our internal controls audit. So a lot of that was tying it in together quite nicely. Um, I'd really like to do more of that sort of thing. So it's just a matter of time to get people scheduled in to help do these trainings. But that was, I think, an example of a very, uh, very positive thing. Um, we're not finished with our building, um, challenges just yet. We did get a, uh, settlement notice from travelers on the ice damp situation over at the Annex Building. Their determination was that they would be willing to pay about fifteen percent of that estimate that Jack Morris had put together for us. So we had a meeting on Tuesday with our local agent, Wolver, uh, what, uh, travelers, uh, adjuster had to say. And just to give you just one quick example, uh, you may remember the construction of the Annex Building. We have, uh, a drop ceiling much like this one. Above that drop ceiling is, uh, sheet or layer of drywall and above that is insulation. And that's the area of failure. So he was able to get up into the roof because there was a hole in the drywall and a breach of the insulation. It heated the roof, caused the freeze thaw situation and so on. So what Jack Morris proposed was, uh, actually, we're fixing the entire drop ceiling grid in the building. The adjuster said, well, that wasn't damaged. There were some tiles that were damaged and they'll certainly pay to replace those, but the grid was not damaged. Well, the counterargument is we can't get to the drywall and the insulation without taking the grid down. And to put back what you've taken down, uh, becomes problematic because if you've ever dealt with any of these before, a number of these, uh, metal grids are, are gonna bend and otherwise be broken in the process. So it would just be easier rather than to try to preserve all that to just replace the whole thing and probably be more cost-effective. We did have sympathetic ears with our local agents. They're gonna go to work with travelers and try to get some modifications. Uh, they did also, uh, point out that if we found other damage as we were doing this that was caused by that, then that would all be, uh, subject for replacement as well. So stay tuned. That saga looks like it's gonna go on for a little while, a longer yet. Um, there is, I hope you've all received the emails from Mac this morning on their policy platforms for the year. Um, it's, uh, what Mac does with the legislature to promote issues that are important to counties. Um, and if you want to review that, if you want to go with Mac directly, you can. If you want to go through me, you can. But if you do feel strongly about any of the, uh, policies that they've put out there, uh, we should at least get on record with Mac. And then finally, yesterday I participated in a Zoom conference with And then finally, yesterday I participated in a Zoom conference with the president.
Yeah, that president.
President of what?
President of the United States.
Really? Um it was a good conference, actually. Uh I was a little uh pessimistic going in about the value of it. But what uh happened, the president had a number of other uh people on the line that were helping dive into the details of the Infrastructure Act. Uh that's uh on the verge of being passed and what that means to the counties. And I'm very glad we have not yet committed our ARPA monies to a lot of these projects. Because it sounds like this particular act is going to take care of a lot of issues like broadband, for instance. So it's good that we're not duplicating uh what's going on. A lot of that was uh dealt with roads and bridges, which is a road commission item. But when it got into not only broadband, but some of the other uh, you know, ARPA type related projects. It's just good to know that there is another source of funds out there so that we don't need, end up spending money where we don't need to uh for for the community. So worthwhile. Um it's been about hundred ninety-five thousand other people on that Zoom. Uh we weren't all, didn't all have our pictures up there or anything like that, but it was interesting, a good experience. So that's that's what I have. Any questions?
I want to talk about OSHA.
No, not yet.
Okay.
We'll have an opportunity, probably a committee to hold this next.
Okay, so, okay. I didn't know if it was appropriate at this time or not.
Yeah, not quite.
Okay.
Anything else? Item eleven, elected official on department head reports. Clerk.
Um, Breckfield, an Ogum County clerk. We are now open for lunch. Um every day. Whatever you guys are bringing us. Um so training's going well. We opened up back for lunch. Uh the forty hours. We'll be done with that at the end of August. Um I don't expect that that to ask to continue that. I think that's about it. We do, oh, we do have um. One township is having a November election. So. That should be fun. Other than that, that's all I got.
Sheriff.
Uh just a couple of things. Uh our newest employee, she's in FPO program right now. Uh she started here a couple of days ago. Uh Paul Heaton, um our our chaplain in his uniforms now, so uh you can probably see him at the fair walking around. And also uh Tuesday, Mark and Craig uh was at the office with us. We presented uh four awards, uh two life-saving awards.
And two.
Tim was there.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's right.
Two life-saving awards to Deputy Wood and Deputy Kirby. Uh we also had some bravery awards uh given to two deputies, Sergeant Knopf Singer and Deputy Worthy. Uh we're we're extremely proud of these men. They did a great job for our community and it's good to know that they're there when we need them. And um I mentioned this up at Foster. Um I got the approval from Judge Noble and Judge Bennett. To start a roadside uh pickup program, the inmates. Um they will be well-supervised. Uh there's some there's some grid that we're going to follow. Um and and the individual that's going to be watching these individuals is not going to be picking up stuff. He's going to be watching the inmates. You know, communication with your family members or whatever. If they they violate any of our rules, immediately go to jail. And he'll never come out again for that program. So, but I gotta wait until COVID is done before that even gets off the ground.
Before COVID's done?
Yeah. Anyway, and also one other thing, uh defensive driving, uh we're going to, we're going to take part in that. We're going to run our deputies through defensive driving. Uh I think it was uh one of the officers there here locally in West Branch. Training, so we're going to hopefully do that at the airport. So let's see what happens there. But we'll get that in. And then when we get documentation on that program, uh everybody passes, we will get a copy to our travelers insurance. Thank you very much for everything you guys do for us. We appreciate it.
And you were at Foster. But I think you visited some of Commissioner David's.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I I. Um I went to Richland and I've been to uh Logan. I went to the Fair Board. Uh they have another meeting tonight, but I'm not going to be able to make that one tonight because it's a it's a kickoff of the uh of the fair. So they're going to have another meeting tonight. So I I'm not sure.
What's our, what's our presence at the fair?
I'm going to be there all week. Uh the officers are going to be popping in and out. We have Marine Patrol there on Wednesday. Our posse members are going to be there. Um our chaplain's going to be walking around. So we're going to have some presence. And we're going to also set up a a tent for Kip. We're going to have Kip there uh with Sergeant Knopf Singer so the kids can see Kip. And hopefully we get some goodies to get out, so.
I'll be over to St. Ellen Bar Sports. They're bringing me back for a little bit of.
They're going to be there too, aren't you, at the fair?
St. Ellen Bar Sports. I gotta work, I gotta work booth. They're bringing me back.
I'll see you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Denise.
Somebody good.
Do you have anything?
Just a question on if something can be done. My office humidity runs anywhere from sixty-seven to seventy-one percent. And our temperature is in a sixty-nine line. Because we have archival documents in there, it's supposed to be at like constant fifty, fifty-five. We have three heaters running at the time because it's so cold. And if I'm going to get sick, it's going to be because of this building. And that's haven't been cleaned in the twenty years I've been here.
Tim, are you making notes?
You bet. I I have the same issue in my office. It's always cold.
It's freezing.
Who's our heating and cooling?
I'll start for Chris. And if we, I I don't know if there's a contract for the boilers and how all the, I I don't know. It should be just a matter.
It's been going on for years.
Novice talking, it should be a matter of turning up a thermostat somewhere, but I it might be more complicated.
I'm the only interior office without any windows, so I don't lose or gain heat. So if upstairs needs more air conditioning, we're frozen out.
Your flooring's pretty, pretty uh bad in your office as well. I was in there last Friday. Looks pretty rough.
It needs to be cleaned. Usually I bring somebody outside in to clean it. If we're replacing it, I don't know, we're staying on the budget. I'm not going to spend money to clean it.
Right, right, right.
We don't, we, this is our office and we don't even have the big windows into the hallway like you got.
Thanks Denise. Tim will look into the head.
I'm freezing right now.
Uh anybody on the phone, any uh department heads? I think I see Mr. Nichols.
Uh nothing, nothing to report from veterans.
Uh Mr. Stein, I think I seen you as well.
He's already left the building.
Oh darn it. Any other department heads on the phone? Okay, we have item eleven manners from the floor. Commissioners may take this opportunity to introduce manners not otherwise discussed on the agenda. Any items from the floor?
I have not.
Item twelve, motions for adoption. Commissioners may offer other motions not otherwise taken up as part of the agenda. Okay, item thirteen, committee reports. Commissioner Serbrook.
Uh attended uh District Health Department, too. Uh we had that uh Gersville. Last week, that's Monday, was the last Monday. Mr. Ron and I were there. Um Ogum County has a dismal, that time. Forty-four percent vaccination rate, uh lowest of the four counties in the Health Department district. No real answers there obviously as to how to encourage people. Word of mouth, more advertising like they tried to do, but. Demand for vaccines minimal right now, so um. We did approve a generator purchase for the Alcona office. That was the only office that did not have a uh automatic standby generator. They actually had one that somebody physically had to, they'd get the alert that the power was out in the building. And somebody locally would then go pull out the generator, plug it in. And so they're getting an automatic one now. Attended uh West Branch City Council. Commissioner Scott and I did negotiations and it's very favorable. We had two meetings last week, Monday and Friday. Very positive outcomes there. And uh as the sheriff already stated, uh Commissioner Scott, myself. Administrator Dolehanny attended the award ceremony at Sheriff's Office on Tuesday. So that's it for me.
Commissioner Scott?
I've attended four of my township, the four township meetings this week. Um Porton Township talked about additional federal money that was available to them. I didn't hear that from any of the other townships, but they say that there's a possible windfall there. Um Edwards was almost uh done, uh. Was it really anything there? Foster Township, uh you guys, they were talking about gypsy moths some more. And and want to add their township properties sprayed. In Ogum County Township, well, um there's a blight, there's a blight uh. Situation of a house that's falling down. And uh and just got a little update about Myers, how it's going and everything like that. So going to it. Um airport, we uh we had a special meeting at the airport and put together some bid specs. And bid out uh for agricultural use of the clear cut areas. Um uh so that trees won't grow back. And and eventually in years' time, it binged into the air space. Uh so bids are are publicly advertised now. Uh there'll be a meeting next week. Um Planning Commission, we uh that and uh. He will a special use permit for a property in Richland Township. And heard about a uh RV, proposed RV park in Rose Township. It was attended, largely attended by public. And we ended up tabling the RV park until this month. And we'll hear more um from both sides on that. Uh I would say it, not able to attend any of the Road Commission meetings or the NEMSCA meeting because negotiations is on NEMSCA day. Yeah, but Owen Parks and Rec, we met this week and uh. Uh we're hoping our uh first fence pro- project up to the first phase of the nature park will be done here shortly. It'll ever quit raining. And uh. And we've knocked through some smaller issues at the uh RV park. So that's what I got.
Commissioner Bob?
Um well, uh Craig just covered the Parks and Rec, so that's off there. Um Mr. Serbrook and I attended, uh actually yesterday, they had a appreciation day over um. In Hale, where District Health, they had a taco bar, uh speakers. Yeah, uh very informative. So that was good. Uh met with the nine-one-one board uh last night. Um I contacted Mr. Dolehanny. Um they were wanting to know who sets the addresses. Uh Consumers Power, I know, used to. And then um I've heard they no longer do it. Uh Jesse over at Dispatch got contacted. They needed, I'm guessing it was a new address for a new build. And I think she went ahead and gave them an address. They said that they have the mapping program over there to add to it. But according to the board over there, they said that's a county, the county should be doing it. And if they have to do it, it'd be just like the league, there will be a charge. Um.
We refer them to building and zoning.
Is it, they're used to, there was, there was, there was an addressing.
There's an address committee that sends Carol.
Okay.
But Brian doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew they did them at one one time. So. Okay. Okay, okay. Um the sick time check uh was received. They did audit it. They did cash it. Sixteen thousand, seven forty-six, thirty-two. So that's all taken care of. Um and then yesterday I met with the Ogum County Med Control Board. What they're looking at there is putting on a vice chair, which will all. And and I don't know which is which. Dr. Bookie is the one chair. And they're talking about putting chair on from actually the other facility. So they're a dual chair. But that's all I have.
Commissioner Rebecca?
I have nothing to do with that.
Um I attended Michigan Works. Uh some some good news there. Michigan Works, since they're not having that career request. Um they're doing some things via video. There's a video out right now for Roscommon Road Commission, the vintage, vintage plant plastics. And fish and wildlife. Um Michigan Works is going to be receiving up to three million dollars just for dislocated workers. Which is an opioid grant, which serves over twenty-four counties in northern Michigan. Uh there's also a clean slate program. Michigan Works Seventy was awarded uh one hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars to administer the clean slate program. And this is for returning citizens and expunging eligible conviction of their criminal record to aid them in pursuit of full-time self-sufficient employment. Um the EDC had some good news. They were awarded ninety-five thousand dollars to the USDA um to see the EDC's revolving loan fund. Plus a three thousand dollar uh contribution to the, from the TFC Bank, um which is now the Huntington Bank, for a total of ninety-eight thousand dollars. Um to get that program up and running for the revolving loan fund. Also, they were very active in the business expo. Um the EDC was there. As far as townships, uh attended Richland um campground. They discussed some uh campground, some uh uh provided more electrical or what do they call them? I don't camp, so.
Utility?
You have none where there's no electric and rustic. Okay, I got a camper, sorry.
Yeah.
Uh uh more, more sites that are not, would be not rustic, right?
Yes.
All right.
So we just want some campground up uh uh updates there. Uh Logan Township uh still in a lot of turmoil. The the sheriff was there the other night, which probably was a a good thing. Um the trash is is a primary concern. They lost a trustee. They appointed a new trustee. So there's lots of uh commotion there. Um I know two of them come in and met with our administrator um to make sure their their practices are. Correct. So I'm sure there'll be more to come on that. Uh Mills was this past week. Uh they're having some blight issues, so there were some individuals there. Um talking about a surveyor. Um their current survey and surveyor, and they tabled that um uh because they're requesting a new. Some some funding, the current surveyor. Sounds like they've had her for quite an extended period of time. Uh the Village of Prescott, they are awful excited. They bought the pawn shop in the village there and uh they are holding meetings there. It looks very nice. Um they renovated the inside. They've been having blight issues over there for quite a period of time as well. They hired Howie. Um to deliver their blight complaints, which has worked out fairly well so far. It was kind of interesting, uh individual they've been having blight issues with uh for a period of time. Um Howie served him the uh initial paperwork and um he showed up at the meeting. And actually was uh extremely pleasant, extremely apologetic. Um there was a lot of misunderstandings and. Very upfront, honest uh individual with a shady, shady past, way of voice that um voiced his apologies. So it was, it was very good. It was a very pleasant uh outcome. So hopefully there's more to come on that. Um they did have some graffiti that uh happened in their park. They were very uh upset about. Um they had made a, uh they also asked me uh to voice this. They had made a complaint. It happened on Wednesday night, I believe. Uh spray paint. Um I'm going to make a trip out there today to take a look at it uh at the village there, at the Prescott um ballpark. There's a playground there. They had, it had happened, they found out about it Wednesday night. They made a phone call Thursday. Didn't hear anything Thursday, so they called back Friday since they didn't get a call back and the word was that the case was closed. They weren't really sure how that had happened, but they did get an officer out there on Friday to take the complaint. So hopefully they can get some funding to fix that. That's, I think that's all I have. That was a lot. Anything else?
Item fourteen, general public comment. This is the second of two opportunities for public comment. On December tenth, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty to seventy-seven to adopt rules and procedures that include a structure for public comment. This public comment period is reserved for the public statement on any manner or issue that is relevant and germane to the county government. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following rules. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject matters. However, fair to follow the direction of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound the gavel when the audience applauds or drives a speaker. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we thank you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Ma'am?
I'm Karen McIntyre. I'm clerk of Foster Township. I'm here to voice my concern on the Sheriff's Department. The people voted for the village, for the Sheriff's Department, so we could get road patrol twenty-four hours. And they, the three for voting to send these officers to school because we know it's bad all over the state. We all support our men in blue. And we know the Sheriff's Department's doing an awesome job. And as you all know, it takes a lot to learn a new position. As you know, as commissioners, it took you guys a lot to learn your positions as it is gonna be for him and any other new officials like the clerk, the treasurer, whatever. But anyway, I just want to support the Sheriff's Department. I know our township supports it because we, and Foster, there's a lot of action on the weekend and we barely see anybody because of the lack of, you know, officers. We know it's a big shortage all over the state of Michigan. So whatever you can do to continue to help our Sheriff's Department, Foster Township will appreciate it. I personally would appreciate it because our areas in the summer is absolute nuts because we get all the sweet people from downstate. And that's all I'll say from that, folks. But some people just don't know how to have respect and be humble to other people. So just wanted to say thank you for supporting our sheriff. I hope you continue to all work together. I know he's got his budget. You guys got your budget and he is his leader, or he is the leader, so he knows, you know, what he's doing. And he's, you know, working with all of us to make, to work together as a team. We can all agree, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'd just like to say one comment.
Thank you.
You're set on a board. You understand how voting goes.
Yes, I do.
Just because you vote against an issue doesn't mean that you might have another motion that you'd like to make if that motion fails. You know what I mean? A lot of times it isn't just black and white. I, I am against the whole thing because I voted one way or I'm.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment in the room? Come on up. Come on. You know the rules.
Are you hoping the committee has a whole meeting next Thursday because there's this auction?
What, oh, you know, I actually was planning on reaching, yes, I will not be attendance. No. I, I know I will not be in attendance. That is the for each auction. So that is next Thursday at, it starts, it, sir. That is at four o'clock next Thursday. So I know I will not be in attendance. So I was planning on discussing that with you, but that's a valid. I'm not done talking.
All right.
So I, is there any other commissioners that will not be in attendance? Is it something you guys would like to change? Is it something, the, the auction starts at four P M?
I would be in favor of changing the time.
Time or the date or both?
The time would be fine. I would, I, I am not opposed to meeting in the morning at like this morning.
I can, yeah, I can't meet here, which you guys are welcome to, but I cannot be here Thursday morning neither. They show Thursday morning. So I mean, I could Thursday afternoon in between, but Thursdays.
Would, it was like one o'clock, one thirty? Would that work?
Yeah, yeah.
I completely won't. I mean, that's fine with me.
Thursday, midday, yeah. I, I, I'm not opposed to that.
I'm gonna be zooming in anyway, no matter what it is, but I was just, I'm gonna be up north. I'm gonna be on vacation. I'm gonna be at Voice Black Island.
You're retired.
Commissioner Vaughn, do you have a preference? Commissioner Newbecker?
I'm probably gonna be on Zoom too, as that's my anniversary. We're going up north. It doesn't matter what time you guys have it, I think.
I'm gonna date afternoon.
So it'll be just three of us in presence?
One o'clock.
Sure.
One?
Does that work? Commissioner Scott?
Yes, that'll work.
Does that work? Tim? So thanks Denise. I was, thanks for bringing that up. Is there any other, is there any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn at ten fifty-six.
Support.
We have a motion with support to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.